The ways I mean to be the whole to order is Tuesday, February 11th, 2025. It's 4:00 PM. Could you please call the roll call?
Yes. Creed?
Here.
Namek?
Here.
Biggitt?
Here.
Beeson?
Beeson? Yeah, I'm here. I forgot my hearing aids.
Here.
Docket?
Here.
Banaja?
Here.
For I'm present.
Okay, can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the name of the Republic, the Constitution, and the Constitution of America, in the name of this law, with the liberty of speech of all.
Okay. I understand there's some changes to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to add some resolutions to the change in the agenda.
Okay. If you could do those separately and we'll make a separate motion for each.
Correct. Okay. I'd like to make a motion for the following resolutions under petitions and communications as item number N. Prosecutor hire qualified attorneys at a higher pay rate than the starting pay rate on the P and 10 pay scale.
Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Motion to add the following resolution under petitions and communications as item number O. Prosecutor, approval for step increase from step 01 to step 03 for chief assistant prosecuting attorney.
Is there a second to that motion?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign.
Make a motion to add the following resolution under petitions and communications as item number P, as in Paul. Travel request for 2025 National Association of County and City Health Officials, 360 Public Health Conference.
Is there a second?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
A motion to add the following resolutions under petitions and communications as item number Q. National Association of County and City Health Officials, 2025 Public Health Preparedness Summit.
I'll support it.
Motion been made in support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And a motion to add the following resolutions under petitions and communications as item number R. RFP bid award for 2024-24 Bay County Central Dispatch Diesel Generator Replacement to Escon Group.
Support.
Motion's made in support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to approval of the agenda as amended.
I'll make the motion to approve all the additional underneath, all the additions underneath to motions.
Support.
Motion's made in support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the minutes from our meeting on January 7th, 2025.
Move to approve. Support.
Motion's been made in support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, it's time for public input. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board? Public input going twice? Going three times? Public input is closed. Petitions and communications. We were going to have a presentation from the Bay County Environmental Affairs and Community Development Director Laura Olgard. That's been postponed to a later time. So, next up would be Bay County 911 Central Dispatch update, Ryan Gale.
Thank you. So today, hopefully pretty quickly, and get to the bottom line of everything up front Just want to highlight some key achievements, challenges, and kind of future goals as we look forward to serving the community here. So, bottom line up front, in 2024, Bay County 911 handled 174,237 calls while achieving significant operational improvements. We looked at a 53% reduction in overall overtime and neared full staffing. And then the team managed several critical events I think most people in this community are familiar with. Medical surges, public safety threats, and then moving forward, our focus really is on enhancing dispatcher training, upgrading technology, and maintaining operational excellence. So our mission, provide the highest level of emergency communications to protect life and property through professionalism, innovation, and dedication. We ensure rapid and effective response to public safety needs, fostering a safer community for everyone. So an overview of our call volume, as I said, we handled 174,000 calls. More than 66,000 were emergency 911 calls, several administrative calls in and out, and it averages to about 477 calls daily with peak periods and storms and other events throughout the year. So that equals about 1.74 calls per resident, and those numbers kind of show what the operations look like to the safety and security of Bay County. So some major incidents, so we played a pretty critical role as we always do in managing any significant public safety threats throughout the year. So we coordinate multi-agency response during large structure fires. We handled and continue to handle, as we look forward to tomorrow, severe weather emergencies and responses, water and ice rescues, kind of geographically being where we are, and the attraction of individuals for the fishing community, and we're at the forefront of just ensuring the safety of the community there. So each incident showcased that professionalism and expertise of our dispatchers during that So some technology and equipment changes and operational challenges. So resource coordination is always something that is critical as we're periodically faced with ambulance shortages. So we work with our EMS partners, other public safety agencies to ensure that we can actually get out the resources required. So peak availability of resources, whether that's police, fire, EMS during those times, we're managed effectively through careful planning and coordination during those times. So to keep advancement, to keep pace with rapid advancements in technology, we focused on modernizing our systems. So we did, you know, we completed a CAD upgrade. We continued to, we added a natural gas generator to our backup, our aging backup infrastructure, and then we continue to look to modernize to align with industry standards and really what the public expects as technology continues to improve. So staffing improvements. Staffing was a major success in 2024. We moved from being pretty critically understaffed in 2023 to almost fully staffed, including the addition of two part-time dispatchers, which has helped tremendously. So we've seen a significant reduction in overtime hours, as I spoke about previously, about 744 hours on average down to 353 in 2024, and we're expecting to see that reduce even more in here in 2025. So some key themes and trends. So several trends shaped our year. Mental health crisis continue to kind of permeate what public safety has to deal with. So that rises, that requires coordinated responses that maybe weren't required previously. We look at seasonal trends, you know, as weather dictates our pace and the severity of calls for service and public disturbances. So sometimes those pose unique challenges. Sometimes that severe weather catches us off guard, but sometimes the patterns, we're able to use analytics and keep pace with the evolving demands of what those look like. So by the numbers, we have pretty clear data that tells us, hey, what our busiest days are, what's, you know, our busiest hours. So they're not far from each other, but Friday and Saturday are pretty much our busiest days, no surprise there. Tuesdays and Thursdays are next, and then the hours of 10:00 AM and 10:00 PM are really our busiest periods. So, you know, we see clear patterns that help dictate our staffing priorities and our resource allocation during that time to ensure coverage when it's needed most. Looking forward, we always aim to enhance dispatcher training, focus on certification and our different crisis intervention skills, and then we look to replace aging systems to improve efficiency and reliability. And then, as I said, we're always analyzing data to, and analytics to optimize resource allocation there. So in conclusion, we have achieved significant milestones. We've handled, you know, 174,000 calls, reduced overtime hours, and successfully managed several critical incidents. So our focus on staffing and technology has positioned us well for the future, and as we move forward, we look to ensure the highest level of service for residents. That being said, are there any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to thank you because I did call 911 for my husband, and it was great. They were so professional.
Well, that's outstanding here. Thank you.
Yes, and it was just, it was just great. The volunteer fire department from Beaver Township arrived, and they were so good, too, and they wanted to make sure they didn't dirty my carpet. And then your people arrived, and it was just wonderful. And I had my husband's medication little bag, and it never got lost.
That's great to hear, yeah.
That's a testimony to taking good care of him, and thank you so much.
Well, I appreciate the feedback. I mean, most of our feedback is negative related, right? As, that's the nature of the business. So we don't always get to hear that positive feedback, so I appreciate it.
Question about the ambulance shortage.
Yes, sir.
You got any ideas, any solutions? I know we talked about a county-run ambulance service at one time.
Yes, so we're primarily in the business of that resource allocation, and if it were up to us, we'd be flooded with ambulances. There's certainly some factors that probably play into why they're not always available, but I think that's really dependent on each agency and their coverage areas. I will say that, you know, we're working with our medical control authority and our partners in EMS to continue to ensure that we maintain adequate coverage, and sometimes just those medicals just flood in as our population ages, and 911 is promoted, and ambulances are really dependent on that. That number just continues to rise, so.
Just want to point out something about the Coast Guard. I know they had the helicopter come in and rescue the gentleman off the ice floe.
Yes, sir, yeah.
I guess our craft, our ice boat, wasn't able to get out there, or?
So the boat attempted to get out there, and when there's so much open water and ice flows and the difference in elevations of those, they were unable to get out there in that way. And that's one thing that we've really stressed with our partners in the Coast Guard is deploying aviation assets as soon as they're available, given the constraints of our local Coast Guard rescue. So we actually, Brent and I and a couple other supervisors, we went down there about six weeks ago, and we had some really good conversation with them and stress that there's a lot of people that come to this community for recreation, and we need these assets. We need aviation deployed immediately because of things like that, and because of the remote location on some of those resources.
Jim Barsha.
Yeah, I'd just say congratulations on tamping down the concern we had with the staff, the mandatory overtime issue.
Thank you, sir.
I think we've gotten, we've weathered that, and I know the, it's awfully hard when people first get hired in, and they're told it's 24/7, and you're going to have to work holidays, and that causes issues, I think, sometimes with the scheduling, but I'm glad we've gotten away from that mandatory overtime because that affected the morale. But thank you, Ryan. You did a great job navigating that. And also, I'll just mention, you're aware of the conflict between, I think, Fraser Township and City Pinconning relative to Northern Bay Ambulance. So we'll try to get together and have a meeting, and whether they have to, whether the ambulance in this authority that you referred to, maybe allow Northern Bay Ambulance, if they transport someone in an emergency situation, to charge a little more since they're not paying the millage in to support the ambulance service.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I mean, I think that's absolutely an option.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Tim?
I just want to thank Ryan as the director, Brent. I've been on the board for the last two and a half years on the committee, and Ryan was deployed overseas, thank you for your service, a year and a half ago, and Brent stepped up to his plate, and he did a wonderful job. So Brent, thank you so much for stepping in, taking over. Since he's been back with those two collaboration, they've picked up steam. The morale has changed, the overtime is coming down, people want to apply. We are finding some group qualified candidates, and want to thank you both, because I'm hearing everything positive now from the employees there.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you both.
Anybody else? Thank you so much, Ryan, for coming today, and we really appreciate your presentation and the hard work that you're doing, and keep up the good job.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your time.
I would entertain a motion to receive.
Motion to receive the presentation.
Support.
Motion's been made in support and to receive the report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is February 2025 as American Heart Month. We're seeking board to proclaim February 2025 as American Heart Month in Bay County.
Support.
Motion been moved in support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Bay County Sheriff, 2025 Marine Safety Grant Program.
Move to approve.
Support.
Support.
Motion's been moved in support. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, MSU Extension Director, District 9 Director, MSU Extension Agreement of Service 2025.
Move to approve.
Support.
Motion's been made in support. Any discussion? Bond?
We have our director here, and we have some new people on the commission, so maybe you want to come say hello, tell them what you do.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. MSU Extension has four different institutes. We work with agri-business and agriculture, so anything dealing with farming. We also have children, youth, and families. We have parenting classes. We have early childhood education, and we also have our flagship 4H program. We work with a lot of the schools here in Bay County. And then we also have our Health and Nutrition Institute, so we do SNAP education, which is Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, and we also do health education as well, and we have health educators. And then we also have CFI, which is our Community Environment Food Systems. A lot of you guys went to the New Commissioner's School Training in Frankenbooth, and that was put on by MSU Extension, and that's our CFI staff. But we also have a CGRAN agent that works here out of Bay County that works with the Greater Watershed of the Saginaw Bay Region. And so typically, we serve anywhere from 10,000 to 20,000 people on an annual basis here in Bay County, but we offer over 200 programs that are offered to people here in Bay County. We have a lot of partnerships with Michigan Sugar, and also Star of the West, and a lot of other big organizations that we have partnerships with to provide programs to local residents and community members. We also sell manuals and ServSafe books, and we also do soil test kits as well, so we have a lot of people coming in our office for those services. So those are just some of the things we provide on an annual basis. I will be providing our annual report. It's being put together right now, so usually I come in in March or April with our annual report, once that's completed, to talk about all of our numbers from last year, and so we're compiling that right now. So I will come back with a formal presentation in March or April, as I typically do. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item E, Central Dispatch Director, replacement of mobile radios for the Bay County Sheriff's Office.
So moved.
Support. Motion been moved in support. Any discussion? Tim?
This was put together with several of the counties. They got a 40% discount on this, and in order for us to get a good discount, we had to go with other agencies, which we did. So we got a really good price. So I want to thank Ryan and Brent for doing this, so.
Anybody else? Bond?
I know they've had trouble with the radios. The ones they have right now are pretty old, and some of the areas, they don't reach out too well, so I think that will help 911, also if they can communicate with the people on the ground, so it's a good thing.
That's good. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Two, purchase and maintain of crew force licenses.
Move to approve.
Support.
Motion's been moved in support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, Director, Department of Aging, Addendum F, Direct Care Workers, Premium Pay Increase, Fiscal Year 2025.
Move to approve.
Support.
Motion's been moved in support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, Health Officer, Acceptance of Funding for Community Health Assessment Activities from McLaren Bay Region.
Move to approve.
Support.
Moved in support. Any discussion?
We have Joel here. Yeah. Yeah, Joel, I think we've used some of this for some of the mental health opioid settlement money, or some portions along that line on the community health assessment.
So the opioid needs assessment that we did last year is kind of an extension to the community health needs assessment and community health improvement planning that we normally do. We actually did a report. We do a report about every three years, and we traditionally have done this in conjunction with McLaren or Bay Health Systems back, going back 30 years ago. And so this actually continues that, and a few months ago, we came to the board and asked for permission to get into an agreement where we got into some new software that uses AI, and we're able to actually generate ports on a quicker basis, but within this database that we've been able to access, we've got a volume of considerable data that we can take into consideration now as well. So the plan is with this is that we'll have a community health assessment, basically to tell how healthy or unhealthy the population is, where our community needs are as far as health and healthcare go, and to work with McLaren and other providers to put programs and projects in place that can help address, like, for example, doctor shortages. A few years ago, we started the clinic with SVSU with data that we gotten from the community health assessment, so.
The other thing is the opioid deaths reporting. I got a notice that there's a reporting, or there's going to be, I think it's coming up next week or so, they're going to have a report on opioid deaths, so we can sort of figure out what the problem is and where the deaths are coming from.
So we do have access to those reports and from the state of Michigan. We'd like to have a little more in-depth and detail, but what we can release publicly has to be done at the county level and not at the zip code or even township level or city level. So I'm interested to see if they're going to improve that, because it's one thing to say the whole county has X amount of deaths, and I know that our deaths have gone down in the last year, but we'd like to be able to pinpoint those two in the more geographic and demographic locations, too.
Especially if there's some fentanyl or those, you know, grouping of deaths.
Yeah.
Be helpful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Joel? Any other discussion? Thanks, Joel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, Manager, Mosquito Control. Item one, 2025 Tire Shredding Contract with Environmental Rubber.
Move to approve.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two, 2025 Light Trap Data Contracts.
Move to approve.
Support.
Moved in support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, 2025 Control Material Bids.
Support.
Moved in support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, Recreation and Facilities Director, 2025 Swim Partnership Agreement with Essexville Hampton Schools, $10,000. Entertained motion?
So moved.
If they're moved in support. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to address possibly it being on the west side of the city. I mean, alternating versus Essexville Hampton, perhaps Handy, John Glenn, they have pools also, right?
John Glenn has a pool. There is a pool at Handy. Not sure about Western.
At Western, too.
Okay.
We can look into it. The schools have to want to, so Essexville happened, what they actually do is they subcontract out to a lifeguarding swimming instructor, right? And so we have to find someone who's willing to do that. Essexville has been willing to do that for us, and it has been a really good partnership. They take kids from all over Bay County. I know it's a drive for some people on the west side and the northern side, but swim lessons are only, because we support this program, swim lessons for each child are only $10, and so it is quite a good opportunity for kids, even if they do have to.
Have you checked with those high schools?
I can reach out to them to see if they're. I can reach out to them to see if they're interested in the future.
Because I would think Auburn, Western, that would be some of the northern, you know, looking at my townships. Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, Personnel Director, Number 1, Excess Insurance for Workers' Compensation 2025 through 2027. Entertain a motion?
Move that.
Support.
Motion's been moved and supported. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Department on Aging, New Position, Part-Time Home-Delivered Meals Driver. Motion's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Kathy?
Yes, Beth. Hi, Beth. I was just wondering, what are the fringe benefits?
The fringe benefits that they get are everything but vacation and insurance, I believe.
So they have a, some sort of holiday, some sort of sick and things like that, but whatever's been bargained in their collective bargaining agreement is what they receive.
Okay. I just wondered what the fringe was.
Mr. Wolf still driving?
Yes, Mr. Wolf is still driving.
So he's on the cover of the great.
Yes, he was. I told him he needed to give me a signed copy so that I could hang it up in our office.
He also is the one that followed my mother lay on the floor when he was delivering home.
Yes. Yep, he still is on the Auburn route, yes.
Yeah. Call 911. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? I have a question for Beth. I wondered about, because you had to dip into your reserves a little bit for that. Is it something that?
It'll be covered by the 2026 budget. I just didn't have it in the budget this year. I didn't expect the three areas to blow up as much as they have. And I, usually what I do is I will change the boundaries of where the drivers are, trying to compensate for that. I don't like them to be anything over 75, because that's 140 to 150 times in and out of a vehicle. I do deal with retired personnel as well, so I don't want them to do too much, but I have three routes where we're constantly 86, 87, 88 every day, and I just can't stretch the routes any further, so.
Okay. Makes sense. Tim, you have a question?
I want to thank Beth for doing a great job at her Department of Aging. Right now, she's doing about 1,100 meals a day, which comes up to be 270-some thousand a year. So thank you so much.
I will pass that on to my staff as well.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll do that.
Any other questions for Beth? Chris?
This is actually a new position.
A new route, yes. So, we add a route, and it's the position that we're, we are hiring for the route. The drivers that are driving right now can say, hey, I want to try this new route and not have mine. So we're just hiring for a home-delivered meal driver, and whatever route is open is the one that they would get.
Okay. Thank you, Beth.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finance, Analysis of General Fund Equity 2024. Entertain a motion to receive.
Move to receive.
Motion's been moved and supported. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 2, Update Regarding Executive Directive 2007-11. Entertain a motion to receive.
Move to receive.
Support.
Removed and supported. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Information Systems Dell Support.
Move to approve.
Motion's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Kathy?
So, is this within the price of this? Is this?
It is. So we own the equipment. So every year, I've budgeted $79,000 for the capital lease, and we own the equipment, so the lease is ended, and we own the equipment. And so, this is for support through August of 2026. So if a hard drive goes bad in our network storage, within four hours, someone will be driving a hard drive. They've done this, like, I think in 2018, 2019, we had a hard drive go bad in previous equipment. And so this is just to get us through with support, 24-by-7 support through to August. So we do own the equipment. I'm just asking for a budget adjustment, and then there is a contract for the support.
Okay. And so, when you had some problems with IT, because I was getting an email, you know, with high priority, was that because we were switching over to Bay County MI.gov?
So we did, we did do a switch where we, last year, we did move to BayCountyMI.gov, and so we did a switch over for, to our email address, and then we did, last week, we did the, you know, final switch, we shut off BayCounty.net.
Okay, okay. I just, okay. Thank you. Yeah, absolutely.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item L, Payables. Entertain a motion to pay the bills.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M, Office of Assigned Counsel, November 2024 Report. Entertain a motion to receive?
Move to receive.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll move on to the items that we added to our agenda. Item N, Kathy, where you gonna, I'll just read these. A motion to add the filing resolutions under petitions and communications as in prosecutor hire qualified attorneys at a pay rate higher than starting pay rate on the PN, PN10 pay scale. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sorry. I didn't call for a discussion. Is there any discussion?
I hear there's a shortage, so we gotta pay more. Generally, we don't jump as high, but I guess we gotta pay what the going rate is if we want to get returns, so gotta do what we gotta do.
Anyone else? I guess we'll do the revote, you know, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Amber. Motion to add the filing resolutions under petitions and communications, prosecutor approval for step increase from step 1 to step 3 for assistant prosecuting attorney. Entertain that motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A travel request for 2025 National Association of County and City Health Officials.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to, National Association of County and City Health Officials. Make a 2025 Public Health Preparedness Summit.
So moved.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. RFP bid award for 2024 Bay County Central Dispatch Diesel Generator Replacement to Escon Group.
Move to approve.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Tim?
We've been waiting for this, so thank everyone for this one.
Anybody else? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's see here. Are there any referrals? Any unfinished business? Any new business? Amber, is there any need to go in a closed session?
There is none, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there any miscellaneous? Are there any announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Sunday, February 2nd, we held a Four Chapins service over at the District 239, Post 239, District 10 in Lynnwood, and we had about 40 residents, 40 people were in attendance with the honor guard. And also were there was Commissioner Nebe, Commissioner Beeson, and myself. And Commissioner Beeson, that's his district, that's where, not even his district, but that's his post that he belongs to. He said, he read the proclamation, and honoring February 3rd as Four Chapins Day. So it was a really good turnout. And I also want to thank Reverend Charles Campbell and Tim Eichstein for also doing the commentating for that service. And I have one more. Lynnwood City Site, which we got, just got done recently, has been a success. I think he's got a little bit of area view of what's going on over there. We've had, the last few weekends, hundreds of vehicles lined up. This is just during the weekday. But on the weekends, there's traffic up and down Lynnwood Road with sleds, fishermen, skaters, and all that. Several people have commented to Reverend Charles that they want to thank everybody for doing this for them. The businesses also thank us, because they've seen an increase with the restaurants and bars and the party store, and the marina also thanks us. So we want to thank everyone for contributing to this, to make this a success. So, that's all I have.
I would agree. It's very well received, and took a long time to get it done, longer than it should have with the permits from the Department of Engineers and Eagle, and the construction. As you know, the first bid was twice what it ended up being on the steel after the pandemic, so we're sure glad that that project is done, and I know I'm getting the same feedback from the community, Tim, that it's very much appreciated, and it's a great access point to the Saginaw Bay for recreational boating and fishing, so.
One more comment on what Jim was saying, is that we have very limited access to the bay. Very, so whatever we can do to create more access is more the barrier, and people are very grateful. Yeah, so.
Tim, is there actually a boat ramp there?
No, what it is, if you look at it, there is a seawall there, and there's an open space that we opened up, so you could put your sleds in and out. But there is a boat, there's a little canal that goes to the marina. It's just deep enough to put little kayaks and miscellan and stuff, and it ain't deep enough to put boats, because the water's so low. But eventually, that will be done down the road eventually. But right now, they want to put a pier out there also, that's down the road also. But before, you couldn't even do nothing. You couldn't go no summer building, nothing. The rocks were all around.
So do you think it'll get as much use in the warmer months as it gets in the winter?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Sightseeing, almost definitely. People are out there. Yes.
Any other announcements?
I would like to introduce Nicole Putt, new purchasing agent. She started with us last week, and she was integral in getting that generator through last week and getting it on the agenda this week, so I'd like to introduce Nicole.
Everyone, nice to meet you. I'm Nicole Putt, new purchasing agent. So, my second weekend.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard. And thank you for Nicole for doing that generator.
Yes, no problem. I'm glad we could get it done. So, got a lot of help from Ryan as well, so.
Yeah, big shoes to fill.
Yes, that I've heard. I hope I can do a good job.
Yeah, and I want to thank you, Nicole, for joining the team, and I know you hit the ground running.
Yes, thank you.
Because purchasing is a very complicated process, and we, you know, Francis was in that position a long time, but, you know, you stepped right in, and all the work you've been doing is superb, so we're very grateful to have you.
Yes, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I have one other announcement. I want to congratulate Essexville Harbor graduate, Ben Van Zumern, a member of the Philadelphia Eagles Super Bowl-winning team. You know, a local guy, made it big, so that's kind of cool. His father, Jeff Van Zumern, was a Bay County employee in the Sheriff Department, in the jail for many, many years, and longtime friend of mine, so.
Right, he was an MSU graduate.
And an MSU grad, which is a great thing.
Blue green.
Yeah, so, any other announcements?
Green guy.
So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
Move to support. Any discussion? Motion, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.